Evening, everybody. This is the regular town board meeting for the town of Reinbeck. My name is Alan Scher. I'm the deputy supervisor. I'm presiding because Elizabeth Spinsia is on vacation. What's the rise for the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands unafree, under God, indivisible, in every justice and law.
Do we have any minutes from last time of approval?
No.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so we have a couple of presentations or items. There's a citizen here named Brian Williams who would like to speak to us. Ready? Just stand at the mic, please.
Sure. Hi, Brian Williams. I live on Correnville Road. And I have a house I'm working on on Stone Church. I'm wondering if it is a town attorney here tonight or not?
No.
No. So, I know you asked me to do two or three minutes, so it might grow into something longer. So, you guys have hired a company that's assessing property, or reassessing property, or whatever the case may be. They've been out to my house, I believe, two times at 200 Stone Church. Last year, when the gentleman gave his spiel, I talked to him once before on the property. And when he got done, he asked if he could come in the house. I said, "No." And he left. Changed sort of his tune and left. You could tell he wasn't happy. So, I'm working on the house last week. And I hear voices inside the house. And because I only have two or three minutes, I'll give you the short version. This gentleman's inside my house. There is a door. It was shut. I walked in the door and I said, "I remember you." There was someone else there. I said, "I remember you. I told you I didn't want you in my house." And he said, "I know, but it's been a while. I thought maybe you'd change your mind." This does not... I'm a retired police officer. I'm the current commander of the rent of BFW. I like to think I have a little bit of integrity. This upset me greatly. If I were to do this, and I was in the NYPD, if I were to do this, the NYPD would get sued for me just wandering into somebody's house. I had to file, I don't want to say a police report, but I went to the police department and they filled out all the paperwork for me to have him arrested. And the witness I have is willing to fill out the affidavit saying that he was not invited in. His story to the police department was that, no, he waved outside the window and the gentleman that was there with me invited him in. So, it didn't happen that way. He just came in. So, I really think we need the town attorney. I'm not, I'm going to sort of suspend everything as far as arresting. You guys may not care if I have him arrested, but he is working for you, on behalf of you. And he came in my house. And it just doesn't flow for me. So, I had spoken to Alan this week. I'm going to sort of hold the paperwork aside, but my only way to come out of this, at the very least, is I have no problem with the town. And the building inspector was in my house the day prior. Get all pictures of us the day prior. The town doing their job. But I will not have this gentleman or his company on any of my properties again. If they cross onto the lawn, criminal trespass, this arrest that I sort of suspend will happen. So, I'm asking the town, I want something in writing saying that they will not, at the very least, they will not. I would like no vendors. I only want the town on my property, the way they normally do, normal procedures, unless there's an emergency situation.
So, I did speak to the town attorney. And because this person has trespassed, is not our employee. They're a contractor that we hired. There really is not much we can do other than write a letter to Tyler and take them...
So, then, I'm going to have to, I'm going to talk to, I have my girlfriends. I know a lot of attorneys. And find out what do I do with the town to get that letter?
Well, let me, I'll tell you what you can do. If you could put what happened in writing.
I did, just the police department has it.
Okay, if you could copy the town. Just write it to the town supervisor. And we'll take that letter and put a cover letter on it, send it to Tyler and tell him this can't happen anymore, forever again.
So, that doesn't really flow for me.
Well, let me explain, let me just say one more thing. This is the first reevaluation we've done in 15 years. The one prior to that was 18 years ago. The reason that we're doing the 15-year one is because we had some structural problems in the way we were doing assessments. We think we corrected that. So, the next time we'll be looking for a company like Tyler is in the 15- to 20-year timeframe. Hopefully even longer than that.
So, I would think the town attorney would have no problem writing a letter that I want. So, I don't know if we should maybe do it the next month or whenever the town attorney is around.
Well, you can, you can write a letter. I'll, we'll draft a letter to go with it. And you can, we'll pass a resolution at the next meeting to send it.
Yeah, and as I mentioned to you, Alan, I do want this to sort of prejudice against Tyler in the future.
Sure.
If it's 15 years out, this has got to be memorialized in the town records. This is not acceptable.
No, you're right. I mean, the protocol is they can only come on people's property with permission. It's always been that.
The Constitution says, for walls, says he's not allowed in the house. So, it's a law. It's not just the protocol. It's the law. You broke the law.
Unless you want him to, right?
What's that?
Unless you want him to.
Unless you invite him in. Right, exactly. You guys know.
Sure.
It's the Fourth Amendment.
That's right.
So, I, at the very least, as I said, I want the town, as you guys now know, but I do want it in writing that they're not coming, they're not invited. Or we just go with a criminal trespass. I guess, and I don't think there's any skin off the townsfolk. I just know that I live in this area. And I'm not looking to cause bigger waves than just having him get his knuckles wrapped. You know, I want at least that. And that's going to be what I consider a letter from the town. Because he was there on behalf of the town, just not of his own.
Yes.
All right?
So, we'll do that.
Thank you very much, Alan.
You're welcome. Thanks.
By the way, I had to tell everybody, Alan, couldn't have been better, responded immediately when it came to the town building. So, I thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I do thank you for saying the pledge of allegiance still. Seems like a challenge nowadays. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Okay, thank you. Next up is, we have a presentation on the census from John Penny.
Quickly, let me show my... Make sure my phone is off. Silence mode is on. That's good.
Can you use the mic?
Yeah. Let me get this a little bit. Here. Moment, yeah, click. Is that okay? Probably easier.
No, I'll watch it. I think the mic, pull it out of the stand.
Oh, okay. I'm just afraid it's going to... Shmack. It was a burden. Exactly.
All right.
All right, I think we're on. Hello?
Hi, I'm John Penny. I'm the chairperson of what we call the Dutchess County Complete Count Committee. I've been charged, the committee's been charged with raising awareness about the importance of people filling out the 2020 census. Very quickly about myself. I was a longtime journalist for about 32 years. The last 20 years, I was the opinion editor of the Poughkeepsie Journal, so I know the area pretty well. And the beginning of last year, I left the company and took a job working for kind of a unique partnership between the city of Poughkeepsie and Dutchess County governments doing communications. I mostly work for the city, but I get tasked with special projects on behalf of the county. And this is one of them. And right now, it's the one that's taking up the most of my time. It's a very important endeavor. It's something that we started on in, I believe, June. So, comparatively speaking, our county has gotten a little bit of head start on some other counties in terms of trying to raise awareness about this issue. And I think that's really important. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the census and why it's important. And there's a number of reasons why it is, but there's two really big ones. One, it's about representation. We do the census every 10 years. It's mandated in the Constitution. And the charge is to count everyone. And when I say everyone, I mean everyone. Their legal status, it does not matter. If they're a living, breathing person in the borders of the United States, they should be counted. That's the law. It's been upheld by the courts. And then, what happens is after, we do the count every 10 years, there's a thing called reapportionment. A lot of people know it as redistricting, where congressional lines and other political lines get redrawn based on those numbers. You might remember that before 2010, the last census, we had three congressional representatives in this area. We now have two. I always feel like I should be able to stop my presentation right there in terms of explaining how important the census is down there. I'm going to go to the second slide. If that's not enough, big enough reason, I'll give you another reason. Big money is on the line. $675 billion is at stake involving 132 programs, everything from highway to housing money, and something that's near and dear to municipal boards across the county, which is community development block grants. If anyone, I would imagine you've all written grants or looked over grants. Certainly, the town has applied for grants and has received grants. And inevitably, census figures are used on almost every grant application. So, that's why that's important. So, hopefully, I have you convinced that this is important and we need to do it. So, your question may be, how's this going to work? And it's a very good question. It's going to really hit this area in mid-March. About 95% of us are going to receive an invitation in the mail to fill out the census. And there's something very different this year. For the first time ever, you're going to be able to do it online. And you'll get notifications to fill out the census in various forms through the mail. It will come with a 12-digit number that you can access the website and fill in your information. Now, again, as a former journalist, if someone told me that was 95%, I would want to get to 100. So, I would ask, well, what about the other 5%? What's up with that? And the answer is, most of those people have PO boxes and not physical addresses. Or they're in what we call far-flung areas like Alaska or northern Maine, which, believe it or not, the count has actually started in Alaska. It's something I didn't know, that they actually front-end those places because they know they're going to be hard to reach. Or if people are in natural disaster areas. I do want to talk a little bit about the PO box situation because that does affect a number of people. It's very important to understand that the census tracks by address. The census, we have information. It's a conglomerate of information from prior censuses, from county planning records, from 911 system grids, and parcel access. You, this whole mix of information where we believe we have an understanding of where the residential structures are in Dutchess County. What we don't know is who's actually living, how many people are living in those structures. So, we may have, for example, a structure may be listed on parcel access, but it doesn't tell you if that house has been subdivided or it's been split into two and it's really two rentals with eight people living there instead of whatever it might be, three. So, that's why that's important. So, one thing to know about the census also is that the census is very persistent. It's not going to take no for an answer. It's going to give you several notifications to get you to fill out the form. You can fill it out in three ideal ways and a fourth way that we'll talk about later. But the three ways are online, through the mail, and/or on the phone. So, that's a way you can do that. And so, the notification process will continue through March. April 1st is the official census day. It's really important to note that you do not have to fill out your census on that day. Some people think they do. Census will ask you where you're going to be on April 1st. And that, for most people, this is a pretty straightforward question because you have one residence. If you have two residents, your people are supposed to fill out their primary residence. There's a lot of different nuances, such as April 1st is important because college students get counted at the college for two reasons. Because, one, they're in college, they're at the college the majority of the year, and that's where they are on April 1st. So, that's why that demarcation's important. But that's not the day you actually have to fill them. We don't all fill out our census on April 1st. So, that will continue. In April, there'll be a reminder and a final reminder. And then, what happens next is, well, let me go, stay back here for a second. Is in May, the census basically gives up on trying to reach you that way and they go out in the field. What we are trying to do is raise awareness so there are fewer people that will have their census being taken that way for a number of reasons. One, it's the most inefficient way for the census to be taken. Two, it's going to be the most inconvenient for you. They'll knock on your door at a time that you're not really ready for. Filling this out online would probably take you between 12 to 15 minutes. So, I always say, fill out the census and move on with your life when you get it. But there's another reason, too. Most of us are going to have a pretty easy time doing this, but we know there are what we call hard-to-count areas in Dutchess County. They are mainly in the city of Poughkeepsie, particularly between the arterials and the north side of Poughkeepsie, in parts of Wappinger and Wappinger's Falls, parts of Beacon, and parts of Dover. And there's a number of commonalities among those places, including a fairly high Latino population. So, there are people that are going to be more reluctant to fill out the census than others. And what we really, one of the goals is to get everyone who can fill this out relatively easy and in an easy fashion to do so. So, the field workers can spend their time concentrating on getting the numbers up of people that are going to be hard to count. And I do want to point out that that is not, it's not only going to be the Latino population. There are people, quite frankly, for a lot of different reasons, who have, quite frankly, a fear of government or they have a fear that the government's not going to be able to keep their information secret. So, that will bring me to my next slide, which is imperative for people to know, that the census is indeed confidential. Not only can the Census Bureau not share the information with the public, it can share it with any other federal agencies, including ICE, or the FBI, or anyone else. But as this works out, the census can ask and receive information from other federal agencies so they're able to do a more accurate count. But that doesn't, it's not a two-way street. And that's really important to know. If someone's found in violation of that, they face a $250,000 fine and/or five years in prison. This just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, but it basically says who's likely to fill it out, who's likely not to. And the younger you are, the less likely you are to fill it out. And somewhat related to that, I do want to say that historically, the children are horribly undercounted in the census. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One, you may be filling out this form and you have a nine-month-old baby right by your side and you don't think it's germane to that person. But it certainly is. If we're talking about community development block grants that may go build playgrounds, and we're talking about healthcare and other services that are provided through census information, either directly or indirectly, it will certainly affect your kids. The other reason is, people, again, don't like to give out information about their children, so they may be reluctant to do it. But this is one time, certainly one time where people should. The census really needs the name and number of people living in each household. It does ask for other information, but that's the basic information that it needs. So, as I pointed out, I'm chair of what we call the Dutchess County Complete Count Committee. It's a very, I think, a very robust, strong committee. There's 15 people on it. It's a diverse committee. And when I speak about diversity, I'm not just talking about ethnic makeup, but also it's age makeup. We have people who have been doing community outreach in Dutchess County for decades. And we have younger people on this committee who are really making a name for themselves as community organizers. And they're doing it in the most important strategic places for us where we know historically it isn't undercounted. For example, between the arterials and the city of Poughkeepsie. Four members of the 15-member committee are bilingual. We've been at numerous events. I've been, I will have, by the time this is over, gone to all 30 municipalities in Dutchess County. That's 20 towns, eight villages, and two cities. We've been at Latino festivals in Poughkeepsie, again, with bilingual members of the committee and also the census to reach out that way. We've been at numerous events. I've spoken to the School Superintendent's Association and the School Boards Association. And we've given them a punch list of things that we suggest they do in the schools because we think the schools could be really important in, one, providing instruction. And more importantly, to see that that instruction goes home to the parents so they know how important this is. So, I'm going to end with just this information. We have a website. If you Google Dutchess County Complete Count Committee, it's the first thing that comes up. Our email address is completecount@dutchessny.gov. And I just want to end. One of the reasons why I'm doing this presentation to municipalities is that this really works through trusted voices and trusted sources. And as much as, again, I was a journalist in this area for a while, I'd like to think there's, I have a fair amount of trust from some people in the community, but I certainly don't know the approximate 300,000 people, all the 300,000 people that live in Dutchess County. The number's a little bit less than that right now. But going to all the municipalities, I'm imploring the municipal boards that you all were elected, you know, people gave you your trust. It's a sacred thing to vote for someone. And I'm asking you to reach out to your constituents to make sure that they know that this is what's going on, that it's coming, that it's confidential, and that it's very important. And I'll take any questions you have.
What happens if there's somebody who doesn't get a card or a call? Can they go online and be counted that way?
Yes, you actually are going to be able, it's best, the best way to answer that is don't panic. The census count actually will continue until June. The field workers will be out that long. So, if people, you know, if mid-March comes and you haven't received it, don't panic. They are going to stagger the release because of the call center and things of that nature. But if every one of your neighbors have it and you don't after a couple of weeks, then yeah, you've got to put a hand up. There'll be, you could call the census. You could reach out to the census and say that. You actually, we're trying not to emphasize this because once you get the invitation in the mail, there'll be a code on it, which is going to be the easiest way to do it. But you will be, once the census line, the online version is up and running, you actually will be able to go on it without that code, pop in your address, but you have to give a cross street. And then, in theory, it should come up. But the best thing to do is to wait until you get that code. But if there, if this starts to go on and you're into April and you know all your neighbors have had it for weeks and have been able to fill it out, then you've got to put a hand up. And if you don't, keep in mind that, you know, this is a big grid and the grid gets filled in. And the ones that don't get filled in, the field workers, you know, will go out and should tag you that way. But again, that's not the best way to get your census done.
All right, thank you.
That's it, John? That's it? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
What I want to do now is go to tab 13, have Suzanne go. So, we have Resolution 2020-0058, grant application to the New York State Archives Local Government Records Management Improvement Fund for Management of Cemetery Records. So, our cemetery coordinator is here.
Yes.
Would you like to speak? Tell us what it is.
I would gladly make a...
Yes, so we are applying, or we're hoping to apply to this grant that's has a deadline in March that we've been working on. It was actually just announced, well, we were expecting it to be announced. It was announced last week. And yeah, so we have all of these old records in the cemetery and we want to get them scanned and digitized so then we can store them properly so they're not in a bad environment and we can keep them safe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Any questions? Do we have, do we need somebody to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Please.
Good, thank you, John. Okay, any other, no more discussion? Do you vote aye?
All in favor.
All in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
Can you oppose? So...
It's my second one.
It's like my second thought.
That's what answers it.
Well, it's true. I'll do better the next time. Okay, so we're going to go back to the normal motions, starting with tab 1.
Thanks.
Thanks. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2020-046, budget transfers and amendments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So, moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2020-047, preliminary accounts payable abstract, 1C, HEAP 70, 128. Forty-one checks for $87,304.95. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fine, they oppose. So, moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2020-048, preliminary accounts payable abstract, checks for $349,841 even. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in the oppose? So, moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2020-049, capital projects abstract, two checks for $24,785. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, so moved. Okay.
Our motion 5.
Hey, go ahead.
This is our great need for a new model. We have the lowest bid in, and I think it's going to be coming from Conways. And I would make the motion to purchase this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions?
What's the brand for Conways?
The brand?
Is it not just the lowest bidder for the spec?
It was, it was comparable, but that was the, it's one of them.
Sure.
Yeah, it's definitely comparable to what we're...
I assume the maintenance department's fine with the one that you put?
Yep.
Good. Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Bailey Wick is the next one. Or should I, I'll just move for it. Resolution 2020-051, settlement of tax sentiory proceeding Northern Dutchess Bible Church.
I'll make the motion.
A second here, second. Thank you. Okay, this is basically a settlement of a tax bill with the Northern Dutchess Bible Church. Any, is there any discussion for this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Okay.
The resolution coming up next?
Yes.
Can I amend that a bit?
Sure. Well, let's, 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 let's make the motion. Second, and then we can amend.
Okay.
So, you're going to make the motion?
Want me to amend? Okay, I'll get you to amend.
I'll make it. I'll move for 2020-052, appointment to the Conservation Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do you want to amend it?
I do want to amend it, add another person to that. It also read George Baker as well as Cole Dixon.
Okay, so it's appointed George Baker as well as Cole Dixon to the Conservation Advisory Board, but both with terms expiring December?
I...
Actually, no. There are two vacant seats. One of them has a term expiring at the end of this year, and the other term is expiring, I believe, next year. So, Mr. Baker could have that one.
All right, so he'd be 12/31/21?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. If that's not the case, we'll have to amend.
We'll do it again.
Some other time. Okay, so this appoints George Baker until the end of '21, and Cole Dixon until the end of this year. And you move to make the amendment?
I do.
And we have a second for the amendment?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Now we'll move to the, to the motion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
As amended, aye? Any opposed? No, so moved. Okay. I'll make a motion for the next one, which is 2020-053, annual 284 agreement for the expenditure of highway monies. This is basically an agreement between the town and the county to do certain paving. And there, do I have a second?
Second.
Good, okay. So I also move to amend this. It's got the wrong street name in it. On the second page of the agreement that we're, that's referred to in the resolution, it mentions Pilgrim Progress Extension and what it is. And I want to amend that to say, Crenrose Hill. So, all the rest of the words are accurate, they just put the wrong street name in the agreement. So, the first, so the amendment would basically change the name. I have an updated copy of the agreement with the right street name in it if anybody wants to read it. It's, this is just the type of rapid wear.
Did you catch that?
No, I'm white, too. Anyway, any...
This fixes Pell's Road. This picks up...
Yeah, this, yeah, this picks up...
Last year's...
Mount Brunson Road, Enterprise Road, and Pell's Road, as well as...
Brunson.
Yeah, as well as Crenrose Hill. Okay, so let's vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Now we can vote on the resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay. Resolution 2020-054, I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is appointments to the Tommy Thompson and Sally Mazera Park Development Committee. Basically, we're appointing Charlie Kyler, Susan Si, and Mary Beth Sweeney to the committee, the sort of one-year terms expiring at the end of this year. I hope I pronounced their wives' names correctly, although I did, and I apologize.
Si.
Si? Si. Any other, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Okay. The next resolution, let me move it, we'll amend it. It's, I'll move for Resolution 2020-055, engagement letter for professional consulting services with the Cultural Landscape Foundation in connection with Planning Board and other members.
Second.
Thank you. So, we want to amend this resolution so that we empower the town supervisor to negotiate terms, because there are some terms in the letter that are not agreed to.
Which is not to say that it's a dispute, it's a matter of ambiguity and uncertainty more than anything, I think.
So the idea is, we will, we want to amend this resolution to give the town supervisor the ability to negotiate and sign an agreement that has no ambiguity. So, John, can you make a modification to that? Good. So, all right, let's vote on it. Is there any other...
Is that specifically with respect to the travel provisions?
For DM as it relates to hourly...
Well, DM and hourly order. I think it's broader than that, yeah. It's quite confusing. And it's, I'll say, for the sake of everybody in the town, the letter was not drafted by anybody in the town around here. It doesn't even work, and Elizabeth is the one who's been talking to Mr. Bernbaum, and she'll take care of this initiative.
So, yeah, the idea is to do this expeditiously so we can get it resolved.
I mean, I don't think you can... I don't, I think there are questions to which we don't have the answers. They're minor, this isn't serious, but it's not accurately determined.
Well, you know, the next meeting, I think, is February 11th. You could just come back then with it, she could just renegotiate.
Well, except that the planning board is really anxious for us to get this...
Yeah, I think the preference is to let Elizabeth complete the negotiation and sign as long as the terms are not substantially different. So you can, we can, so let's vote on the amendment.
For what it's worth, it's my guess, but I think it's probably an accurate guess, that Mr. Bernbaum and Elizabeth did reach a meeting of the minds, but that the letter that was drafted doesn't...
Doesn't...
It's just not, it's complicated and messed up.
When is Elizabeth back?
Friday, I believe.
Well, she arrives back in the second, so we might be there within a week or so.
Okay, so we'll be able to get this thing handled pretty much that week. That could be okay with the board?
There is, I know a lot of you realize there is some urgency with regard to applications that are before the planning board, for which Mr. Bernbaum would be enormously helpful. And so, sooner rather than later would be...
Okay.
And thank you for taking that into consideration.
Thank you, Kathy. Are you, John, are you clear what we're going to amend it to?
Yeah, I wanted to make this, the ambiguous terms clear.
Right.
And assess that with you guys.
Right.
And then empower Elizabeth to sign the agreement. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Now let's go to the resolution. Any discussion on the resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Okay. Okay, I'm going to move for Resolution 2020-056, request for proposals for removal of spruce trees at the recreation park tennis courts.
Want me to address that?
Sure.
These are trees that have, over the years, really devastated the courts there. People have been injured at times, and we get a lot of people now playing pickleball there, and they're a lot older, and these trees need to be taken care of, removed, and put something else appropriate there.
Wait, do we have a second?
And they're done, one or two ideas.
Yeah, all right, so I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, oh, this was a warning. Okay, Resolution 2020-057, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second. Yeah, this is training for the town zoning enforcement officer. Basically, it's to pay for a class for the ZEO, and it authorizes the ZEO to take the class and reimburse for travel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We did number 13, and we're on, okay. I'll move for Resolution 2020-059, town hall use application by the Hudson Valley CSA Coalition. Basically, there's an application here to use the town hall on...
1/28.
On... 3/28. March 28th. Any discussion or questions? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay, next one is, I'll move 2020-060, New York State Municipal Workers Compensation Alliance Member Participation Agreement. This is a, a second?
Yeah.
Exactly, good. It's basically an agreement that we sign every year.
This is a carryover, right?
Yeah, it's a carryover. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Ahah. Okay, this is a, I'll make a motion for 2020-061, opposing Dan Scammer build-out proposal. This is a climate change-oriented resolution that basically communicates our opposition to the Public Service Commission of the state. Did somebody second it?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any, any discussion?
Well, this is, yes, discussion. When I prepared for this meeting, it occurred to me that we don't know enough about this project to vote on it. I came here, I intended to come here suggesting that we ask for more detail and that we give people on the other side of the controversy, the Dan Scammer people, an opportunity to present to us as well. Then we received, I think it was today, it may have been yesterday, an email to that very effect from Dan Scammer, asking us to give them an opportunity to address some subject, and I think we should. So, I presume that means we table to us?
Sure.
And make those arrangements, and that we hear that.
So you want to make a motion to table the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
That's so moved.
All right, all in favor of tabling the motion?
Do we need a second?
I'll second. Any second? Okay, so it's tabled. And that, ladies and gentlemen... Oh, that's right, we have new business.
I'll talk about it.
Go ahead.
Okay, we need a...
We'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution number 202, 0062, which is appointing a clerk to the Conservation Advisory Board. Our clerk has left and has a kickline, did a very fine job, but Suprema Vivores has stepped up and will take the job.
Any other discussion?
Is the rate dictated by something, or that's just the previous rate?
That's previous rate, it goes up.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Was it a second? Did you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So, all opposed? So moved. I don't know who else could...
Now you got one.
You have to train me, Brad.
Can we have a quick resolution, as a matter of fact?
All right, so is there any other new business? Any public comment on any non-agenda item? I move adjourned, have a second? That's it, thank you.